My phone over here. We can get time. Okay. I assume Sharon's on the call?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, everybody, we're going to begin the July 16th Chesapeake Beach Town Council Meeting. I'll take real calls for the record. The entire council and mayor are present minus Vice President Bodine. Valerie works for the Census Bureau and she's doing her important work for them right now. So she can't make it, but she's working for our country at this time. So she'll be missed. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands indivisible, free, and just. Amen. Okay. All right. Get rolling here. Okay, we, I just remembered, I'm going to kind of revert to how we were, what we do a lot of times on these virtual meetings for the perfunctory motions, that sort of thing. Okay, we usually, you know, select one to make the motion and the other to second. It kind of helps, it helps sharing. So Derek, if you don't mind, you know, making those motions and Charlie, if you don't mind seconding the, you know, perfunctory ones, not that you're obligated to do it. I don't think we have anything challenging here this evening. We'll do it that way. Derek and then, you know, Charlie with the second. So approval of the agenda.
Will do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes had it? Next, we're going to ask, is there anybody in the virtual audience that has any public comment on any item on the agenda? If there is, please, please do so now. Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the June 18th Town Council Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Okay, now we get to have some fun. We have two volunteers who have stepped up to volunteer for two boards. We, in the past, when we've had, we've tried to schedule this at a work session. It's really five oh one, six of the other. But we have resumes and we have an opportunity for the council to meet each candidate. And we'll vote on this, you know, later in the meeting. So first is me, Warderville's candidate, Jan Rutke. It's, you know, we really need no words to introduce you, Jan. But so I won't, but what our custom is to basically, if you will, say a few words about yourself. And if the council has any questions of you, they will, they will do so. So the floor is yours, Jan.
Okay, thank you. I've lived with my husband Chuck in Chesapeake Beach for over 30 years. Chuck had a business here with his Bay Hill accent for many years as well. I retired four years ago from a 40-year career in real estate. I have served on many different committees and in different positions in the town and loved every bit of it. I'm currently on the Walkability Committee with Derek. I spent some time as a town council member and so did my husband Chuck. I'm really excited about the idea that I can serve the town in a new and different capacity. So I'm looking forward to it if selected.
Well, thank you, Jan. And if the council has any questions, I'll start with Derek and work my way around the horn that way like we usually do.
All right, well, Jan, it's nice to meet you finally. No, actually, I don't have any questions. I mean, as she said, you know, I know Jan quite well and she serves with Charlie and I on the Walkable Communities Advisory Group. And, and we've done a lot of work together there. But also just want to say that I served with Chuck on the Board of Appeals prior to council. And Jan was always there to support the work that we did there. And she's, I know she's well-versed in the responsibilities of the Board of Appeals. And, and, you know, she has a sharp man at home to tap into as well for his experience. So I totally support this nomination.
Well, thank you. I'll go to Keith if you have any questions.
I have no questions. Thank you, Jan. I really appreciate you stepping up and volunteering to do this. I know you have vast experience and I think the town's really lucky to have you on this, on the, on the appeals board.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, good evening, Jan. Everybody certainly appreciate.
Hi, Greg.
Hey, everybody certainly appreciates your spending more time there at Town Hall. I've known, I've been acquaintances with Jan Rutke for well over a decade. I know her to be a very well-rounded individual, very experienced in a lot of different, in a lot of different things. And she's going to be an asset in any role she decides she's willing to spend her time on here at town. So thanks, thank you, Jan.
Yeah, thank you, Greg.
Very well. Larry?
Nothing much to add to all the compliments. Jan, welcome back. Thank you for offering to serve on the board and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Larry.
And finally, Charlie?
Yeah, sorry, I thought I was muted. Yeah, nothing but positive things to say, Jan. Obviously, don't need to, your head will get big if we all keep saying, saying good stuff about you. So we're happy to have the chance to.
It'll, it'll match the rest of me, Charlie.
Okay, very good.
Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jan. And thank you, council. Next, we have me planning board candidate Kathleen Boralt. I just want to say a few things before I give her the floor. If you don't, if you don't know Kathleen, she, she lives down the south in the town where I do, on B Street. She's lived here for many, many years, raised her family here. I happen to know her two sons and since I'm mayor, I'm going to have the opportunity to embarrass you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Nick Haroldis, I've known him for a long time. He palled around with Patrick. He, I know Nick Bailey, he was a great athlete and he not only was an athlete, but he, you know, but he coached kids. He, when he was in high school, he took the time to coach young children. I thought that was very admirable and now he's all grown up and a married man. And then there's Thomas, who was also a great athlete and a starting catcher for Northern High. And I believe Thomas right now is studying to be a doctor for the U.S. Navy. I'll let you embellish that when you, when you get the floor. But this may be my only time to put something about those lads on public record. So I thought I would take the opportunity to do so. So Kathleen, the floor is yours.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. As you said, Pat, thank you for the nice welcome. I should, I should probably have not followed Jan. I should have kind of wiggled my way to get in front of her. But anyway, nonetheless, my name's Kathleen Boralt and I am, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The Honorable Mayor Mahoney, as well as the C members of the council. I just want to, as you mentioned, Pat, I live up on B Street on the, and I'm fortunate enough to have the four-mile view of the Chesapeake Bay, which is absolutely beautiful. I have lived, my family and I have lived here for the past 20 years and very proud to be residents of Calvert County, as well as Chesapeake Beach specifically. I've had a career over 32 years in public service. I, I was a member of Public Safety for 22 years and I served in various positions from boots-on-the-ground to supervisor to a command position in leadership the last seven years of my career. Most recently, in January of 2020, I retired from the federal government where I had worked at the Treasury Inspector General for Tax Administration and where we oversaw the IRS. So in January of this year, with my retirement, I became a, I joined the Save the Bay Foundation and I became a water captain. There's no voting privileges associated with that, unfortunately. I didn't find that out till later. But as well as I'm a member of Chesapeake Beach's Green Team and I'm a member of St. Anthony's Parish, where I often lecture. My reason for seeking a position on the Planning and Zoning Commission is my affection and respect for Chesapeake Beach to preserve the uniqueness and vibrance of the community as well as, I mean, it's very unique. As I told my son 20 years ago, not everybody gets to see the sunrise on the Chesapeake Bay. And they were like, whatever. Okay, so anyway, nonetheless, just to follow up. Pat, Thomas, my youngest son, is in his fourth year of med school at the University of South Carolina. And the Navy has graciously decided to, to contribute and make and support his medical career. So I just want to, again, thank you for the opportunity, for the nomination. And I look very forward to becoming a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, thank you, Kathleen. And if the council has any questions this time, I'll start with Charlie.
You, Charlie?
Yeah, are you with us, Charlie?
Muted.
Sorry, guys. You're, I've not had an opportunity to meet you face-to-face, but your resume and your introduction sound very impressive. So very much look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Larry?
Kathleen, welcome. Very impressive resume and I have to, having formerly been a member of Planning and Zoning, just point out that your educational background in school counseling, guidance counseling and psychology will be very helpful on Planning and Zoning.
Excellent.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah, good evening, Kathleen. Thanks for volunteering your services to Planning and Zoning. We've had the honor, I'll say, of voting to appoint several Planning and Zoning members during my tenure. And I have seen Planning and Zoning a little bit of a turnover there. I know it's, can be a little bit of a grind. They're working through their comprehensive plan. I too had read your resume, was very impressed. You've got mayor's recommendation, which carries a lot of weight with me. I see you're also involved in various aspects of town matters and we're looking forward to your efforts and your future contributions to the town.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Thank you, mayor. So Kathleen, thank you very much again for volunteering, you know, really without experienced, passionate and intelligent people helping on these committees, the town would be lost. So really appreciate you throwing, throwing your hat in the ring.
Well, thank you, Keith. I'm looking forward to it.
And lastly, Derek?
Yes, thank you, Kathleen. I know you from St. Anthony's, I go as well. And I've always, you know, been impressed in how you're, how comfortable you are and getting in front of people and speaking very intelligently and especially in some of our town meetings in the past where you've come and you've shared, you know, thoughtful ideas and asked important questions regarding planning. And I think that's, you know, we need, we need more of that. So I think you coming onto the Planning Commission, even right now, especially at this, at the stage of where they are with the comprehensive plan, it's going to go a long way to helping them achieve their goals. So thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Derek. And before I move on to the Town Administrators Report, A, I want to thank both Jan and Kathleen. And B, I'm going to tell you that I strongly suspect you have just signed up for many more volunteer meetings. So, which you'll find out later on. So if you, if you have something to do right now or later on in the evening, feel free to drop off the call because you're, I think we kind of reeled you in. So that's your call. That's your call, you know? But thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the Town Administrators Report. Holly, is there anything that really sticks out that you want to mention out, that is on your report, which we have a copy of?
Holly, you're muted.
Sorry about that. So I just wanted to mention this water park in Bayfront Park. The staff is working tirelessly to ensure residents' safety at both of those locations. Everything is moving very well there. Also wanted to mention as well the census. We are still doing quite well in our census report, but want to continue to get the word out there to complete your census self-report and let your neighbors know the importance of it as well.
Okay, well, thank you. Does the council have any questions of Holly? If so, I'll start with Derek.
Yeah, just a quick one regarding the water park in Bayfront Park. Is the staff or the Beach Patrol, are they experiencing any issues, you know, with, I'm sure they're turning it away, some either out-of-county or out-of-town residents at the beach? But are there any issues experienced that, you know, that they're having to face? You know, with, with.
I think.
Go ahead.
Which, which in terms of turning people away that are not.
Correct.
Able to gain entry. We have had a couple incidences where patrons from either the county or a neighboring town want to gain access to the beach and are unable to. However, our staff has been great about handling those issues and our officers have been very supportive as well.
All right, good. I can tell you from, you know, living right across the street from, I haven't heard any issues. You know, we have a lot of folks in where I live who go over there and I haven't heard any issues whatsoever, you know, with the Beach Patrol. So just give you that feedback.
And Derek, I like to add, I like to add on to Holly's comment because I've spent a lot of time with the, over at, at the beach on both entrances. And for one, I want to say that the staff we have there, I really applaud them for their customer service. These, these young folks are really great. They're getting a lot of people up off the highway that are coming in. They, they sort of know by the time that they pull their car in that, that they're not allowed in because they've seen so many signs, which I commend Jay for doing that. They're very nice, the people seem to be very nice. They just, you know, turn around and go on their way. But they're, they're constantly working. They're, they're really, and they're doing a great job. So I really have to applaud the staff that we have there. So that's just sharing my experience with you. Okay, next we'll go, anybody else on council? We started with Derek?
I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. So, so I've only heard good things too, so that's wonderful. One, one question I do have, Holly, is at the boardwalk entrance to the beach. Right now, there are boards that are across that entrance that folks can kind of walk around. I know there's some residents on B Street who have small boats that they often will launch from the beach, but they're unable to do that now with those boards there. And was wondering if it would be possible to replace the boards perhaps with a fence or some other, or somehow else allow them to access the water with their boats in the near future?
Can I start, Holly?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess because I live there and I'm more, you know, familiar with that area. Yeah, you know, we're, everybody's happy the way things have worked out there. The, the way it is gated now has been a great deterrent for people that are, that are not town residents and we're not experiencing that, that traffic down on B Street. And a lot of it goes to having that, that border up there. I realized that there is one resident that has a untagged boat that is used to using a trailer and bringing it at times on the beach. I know a lot of neighbors have complained about that one neighbor taking their untagged boat and using it on the beach. We obviously have free launching over at the, you know, a marina. But I think from my perspective, you know, we're, right now, we're in the middle of a public health, you know, crisis. We're doing everything that we can. And basically, we're doing a great job. And I say that for all of us. It's working. We are deterring, deterring out-of-towners from, you know, coming in during this public health time. So I, you know, it's my plan to keep things exactly the way that they are. And we certainly, if you, if you, if you have a boat, it should be tagged and there is a place to put that in the water for, for free, compliments of the town of Chesapeake Beach. I don't know if you want to add to that, Holly, but I know me being there, I'm, I'm very aware of what goes on.
I think you've addressed the question.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, good evening, Holly. I don't have any general questions. I know that we had, you'd answered some questions that I had sent in recently. I appreciate you turning that around on a dime practically. I had just a general comment, the town's running on a high level and Holly's a big part of that. So thank you.
I appreciate your kind words, Greg. And actually, truer words were never spoken, sir. So thank you there. Larry?
A couple observations, I guess. I took some of the grandkids to the water park on Sunday and things are very well-run there. Goes to everybody on staff, Marilyn, Milo, everyone. Very well-run, good job at trying to keep as much social distancing as possible. So good job. I wanted to say thank you, Holly, for submitting the Sustainable Maryland request. Hopefully that goes through quickly and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Charlie?
I want to echo that the reports are that the water park's being run very well. And we actually have some, hopefully have some friends who have an opportunity that will get there over the next couple of weeks. The bad news is that report came largely from my friend Larry. So it's not exactly very.
Thank you, Charlie.
The other thing I wanted to say is I don't understand why our census numbers aren't higher because I have filled the darn thing out like eight times. So I, I don't know. Doing the best I can.
It sounds like All-Star voting ballot struggle, huh? And I still didn't make the All-Star team. I don't understand it. Okay, very good, thank you. Next, Public Works Administrators Report. We've read the report. Jay's not on the call. He took ill earlier in the week. He's recovering, but I've asked him to stay home and just, you know, rest up because we all need, we all need a healthy Jay. You do. If you do have any questions, please send them to Holly and, and she'll get back to you. Please, you know, send her an email and she'll get, get back to you. Water, and it wouldn't hurt to say a prayer for Jay. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant. We've read John's report. Do we have any questions with John? Very good, thank you, John. Code Enforcement Report, we've read Connie's report. Do we have any questions of Connie? Very good. Town Treasurer's Report, we read a report from Dale. Do we have any questions of Dale? Town Engineers Report, we've read Wayne's report. I forgot to ask whether Wayne was on the call or not, but do we have any questions of Wayne?
This is Derek, I do.
Is Wayne on the call, Holly?
He should be. Wayne, are you, are you there? Not seeing him.
Well, maybe we can get back to that. Hold your question, Derek. And if worse comes to worse and he can't get on the call, we'll just, you know, chisel his questions through Holly. But I hope he does get back on the call.
Fair enough.
Deputies Report, I'd like to begin by introducing Lieutenant Joe Hollinger to everybody. Joe, you know, Ronnie was just promoted to captain, although he's left the beach. As Lieutenant Hollinger was explaining to me, he does answer to Ronnie. So while Ronnie's left the beach, we haven't left him. So we, you know, we've read Joe's report and if we have any questions, that's fine. But I'm going to give Joe the opportunity to say hello to the, the Town Council and the town. There you go.
Yeah, yeah, thanks a lot. Meeting everybody and if I haven't met you already, meet me in person and look forward to working with everybody and getting to know everybody a little bit better. And we're excited about it. And I, I guess I'd give you a little bit of background on me. I've been 21 years with the sheriff's office and then four years with the army. So that means I've actually reached my retirement mark, but I'm just not ready to go yet. So I'm going to hang in there a few more years and, and work with you all. So I really look forward to finishing out maybe my last four or five years or so with you. My career's been split just about 50/50 between patrol work and detective work. I was a child abuse detective for about 10 years. So, you know, I need a little break from that. So look forward to being out on the road and seeing you all out there. And, and met a lot of people already. And I will say, one observation I've had so far is everybody's so nice. People waving at me all the time and people, so many people have come up to speak with me. So it's really, it's, you know, really a nice town. And I love the people of Chesapeake Beach already, so.
Well, you will find that we do have a very friendly town and we are very supportive of our law enforcement in this town. So it's one of the greatest towns that you could ever work in, so that's good. Does anybody on the council have any questions for the lieutenant?
What question? Larry does.
Okay, let's start with Larry and work our way around. Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Not a question, but first of all, welcome. Good to see you. Look forward to meeting you in person sometime on a social basis, not on a call basis. Second of all, I just wanted to say thanks to the department. I had sent a message to Sergeant Phelps about an abandoned car on 31st Street and it's gone. So thank you very much.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, again, welcome, Lieutenant. I live over, I reside in Richfield Station. Had a rash of issues over the past year or so. I'm sure you've got some background on that. And there's some scuttlebutt here in our own community's neighborhood watch of having neighborhood watch meeting. And they were interested in trying to have one of the deputies attend. And then who, I was just wondering who I should reach out to for that.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can set that up if you, if you want. I can reach out to you about it and set it up. Or if there's someone in particular that you want to give me their contact information, I can take care of that. And.
Talk to them about it. They're the ones that are going to initiate that. We really appreciate, we have appreciated, ever since I've lived here, this has just been a, it's been a safe town. The baton is handed off to different people. I've just, I've never felt that there was really a drop in any service. Some of the things we are experiencing in Richfield Station are cyclic. Some other things have never happened before and it probably may not ever happen again. But, you know, we're all just trying to do what we can to be vigilant.
Yes, sir.
Work together. So I appreciate, thank you, Lieutenant.
When time comes, Greg, we'll put you in touch with Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Anybody else on council?
Yeah, I just introduced myself, Lieutenant, this is Derek. So very happy to have you here. You know, you're inheriting, at least from my perspective, a real good group of deputies down here. And, and I certainly look forward to, to your leadership of that group.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to it.
Okay. If that's it, then we'll move on. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, as always, if we have any questions, please forward it to Larry. That, Mayor's Report. Just a couple of things. A, I want to wish everybody a happy and safe summer. We're, you know, we're elated that the, that the water park is, is open at the, at the comfortable and safe capacity that it is. And it's nice to see our town children employed and our town children in there having fun. But I do want to relay, as I've mentioned in these meetings, you know, I was on bi-week, I was on weekly calls with the governor's cabinet secretaries. They've been moved to bi-weekly calls. But I wanted to share the information that I received or the, or the conversation from the call last Friday. And, and it was basically with the, the county secretary of the Department of Health, the state police and the Department of Commerce. And it was really about, you know, the message that the state is trying to send. And, you know, the message is to municipalities, don't let your guard down. This, this thing is still here and we're afraid that it might spike back up soon. We all know how the governor takes this serious. And it's basically, and I received a separate, you know, email from the governor that, you know, basically said, you know, the state can't do this all on our own. They're relying on municipalities and counties to enforce what people need to do in terms of social distancing and wearing masks and, and doing so at all the appropriate, you know, places, wherever it is, you know, restaurants, public facilities, that sort of thing. And, and they just said that if we don't give out that message, if we don't keep that message strong, this whole thing is going to fail and we're going to go back to where we were and we don't want that. and we don't want that. I had some specific questions to ask them, they, you guys probably know, I always, you know, I ask so many questions, they know me now, they know the whole town now, you know, they're actually waiting for me to chime in, but the Department of Health and the state police, they weighed in with basically what I'm saying about, keep that message going, you have to keep, you just have to keep getting that message out there, you have to keep enforcing it even when you don't want to. Everybody wants to think this thing's over, but it ain't over, so please stay strong and have your community stay strong. And that was great, but the interesting message that I took away from that day came from the cabinet secretary of the Department of Commerce, I think it was the deputy secretary, and she said, and Larry, you'll find this interesting, she said, to be clear, she said, we need mayors and towns and, you know, counties to stay vigilant with wearing masks. She specifically said masks. She said, because the economy in Maryland is just starting to come around and if you, meaning me, and if you don't do your job, this is all, we're all going to go backwards and we're finally getting the businesses up and running and being successful and if something happens and we fail, we're going to have to close these businesses back down. The Department of Commerce is on record as saying as they don't want the businesses to close down and she said, and I'm quoting, you know, so please, Mr. Mayor, keep your guard up, keep enforcing that message. So I'm sharing this with the entire town because just let everybody know, it's July, we all have fun, a lot of our summer vacations have been canceled, we're in the mood for a break, everybody's in the mood for a break. We can still have a break in our daily life, but we have to keep our guard up, we have to wear that darn mask and we have to social distance, so that is my mayor's report. Thanks for listening to me. Next, we have plant zoning, a meeting is scheduled for August the 5th. Board of Appeals, a hearing is scheduled for August 18th. Economic Development Committee, Larry?
You have the report in front of you, I'll just highlight a couple things and add a couple things to it. One is, again, thank you very much to Holly, Marty, everybody in town hall for keeping our website updated on assistance to residents, small businesses elsewhere in the community and how they can try to continue to work through this. The meeting on June 23rd with the County Department of Tourism was interesting in that they are continuing to try to work as carefully as they can on reopening businesses and recreational facilities. I understand the pools in the county are now open, as is our water park. Did participate in the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference held virtually, it was very interesting, this is the first conference that I've participated in virtually. As usual, the first one of everything was a little bit bumpy along the way. There were some, you know, cutouts and people weren't ready to talk and what have you, but overall, it went reasonably well, was in on several of the learning labs. One thing I did want to point out, as I mentioned in the report, is during the roundtable with the Ben Grumbles, Maryland Department of the Environment, I've known Ben, gosh, 15, 20 years, so I took the opportunity to ask him if MDE had any updates on the remediation program at the Naval Research Lab. And of course, said, you know, he personally did not, but he was going to have somebody look into it. And just this past week, I got a contact from a Tyler Abbott at MDE saying that he was contacting the Navy just to, you know, sort of nudge him a little bit on, what are you guys doing? It's been quiet for months now, we, Greg and I have not heard anything in a very long time as to what's going on with the Remediation Advisory Board. The other interesting note I'll make about the municipal league virtual conferences, they also had virtual happy hours. You know, anything you came away with was a virtual hangover after the virtual happy hours.
That's totally fun.
Yeah, and then last of all, just for the record, as most have unfortunately already heard, we have made the very difficult but understandable decision to cancel Taste the Beaches for this year. We will see everyone next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Larry. Keith, Twin Beach Open Water Use Awareness?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just a few statistics, we have not met since March, however, we do have a meeting planned now for July 30th at 6:00 PM virtually and that information will be going out online. Thank you, Holly, for doing that. And just a few statistics from the Calvert County Sheriff Office's opioid prevention and overdose report that came out today. All told, this year, there have been 60 opioid-related overdoses in Calvert County. Eleven of those have occurred in Chesapeake Beach zip code area and as you saw from the sheriff's report tonight, six of those within Chesapeake Beach proper. And so things are starting to heat up again in terms of overdoses, unfortunately, on top of COVID. So during the, during the meeting, we certainly invite the public to attend, especially if you have suggestions on how we can get the awareness and prevention word out there. A lot of what we were doing prior to COVID was, of course, in-person meetings, so that's going to have to change and so we're looking at suggestions on what we're going to be doing. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Derek, Walkability Community Advisory Group?
Yeah, it's just a quick update, Holly and I have a meeting tomorrow with the planning firm to receive an update on their work and then we're also going to discuss preliminary plans for a full walkable community meeting with the planning firm and then subsequently public input to the master plan that they're drafting. So I'll have a much more in-depth report next month, or our next meeting, excuse me.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, no one finished business, new business. Council to appoint, to reappoint Dave Ferguson to the Board of Appeals, as is our custom when one of our volunteers, you know, admirably serves his term and his or her term and for some reason wants to re-up again in their volunteerism, we don't usually bring them in, we just, you know, understand they've been doing a great job. So do we have a motion to reappoint Dave Ferguson to the Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Council to appoint Jan Ruckey to the Board of Appeals?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And council to appoint Kathleen Burrell to the Planning Commission?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it, three new, well, two new volunteers and one re-up. Woo-hoo, good night. Okay, at this end time, we ask, is there anybody that on the call that has any public comment at all? If you do, now is the time. Hearing done, we'll go to the council lightning round. I'll begin with Charlie?
A couple quick things, in this era of COVID, I think I've mentioned in the past that I've spent a lot of time on my bike, I've also spent a lot of time walking around Chesapeake Beach, I've actually discovered some nooks and crannies Chesapeake Beach I didn't know existed. I'm not entirely sure, I'm supposed to be in every, some of those nooks and crannies. I have suffered the attack of the deer flies, I don't know if anyone has felt those guys, when they get your scent, it's over. And, but it's been quite entertaining, I will tell you that I am very anxious to get our committee restarted because as great as the town is and as much walking as there is to be done, there's certainly some opportunities to make that better. And then I'd want to say one other thing, I did something last week, about 10 days ago, that I haven't done in a long, long time and I encourage everyone here to take the opportunity to do it, and that is, I checked out a physical paper library book and it was a pleasure.
Wow.
And that's all I have to say about that. I did return it and I do not owe fines. Scouts honor it.
That's your story, you're sticking to it.
That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Okay, Larry?
Two things, one, earlier in this week, I participated in another climate change webinar put on by a group called Environmental and Energy Study Institute, a group that I used to be on, the Board of Directors many years back. Again, just talking about steps that communities and governments can and should be taking to help protect communities against climate change, discussion resilience and adaptation. Second thing is, in a moment of weakness, I signed on and took a class and I'm now a certified sky-worn spotter, certified by the National Weather Service, so if you ever see me looking out the window at clouds and things like that, that's why I'm doing it, because I can report in now to the National Weather Service if I see unusual signs of severe weather, so there you go, thank you.
Yeah, there was a sitcom about a guy like you once, I forget what it was.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, good evening again, everybody. Kind of wanted to make a comment on these Zoom meetings that we've been having across the diverse volunteer boards that we have in particular. I've been watching some of the meetings online, live and recording and coming to the realization that we may likely not have any live council meetings possibly through the election. I don't think we've got a council meeting scheduled in August, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor. So that leaves about two meetings left and I just wanted to say that even here at home through Zoom, serving with the council and with this group of folks, saying the pledge of allegiance still gives me goosebumps, it's certainly been an honor to serve all residents and businesses. And I wanted to give a shout out to all of our volunteers because, and watching these movies, watching the videos, the meetings and things, they're just filled with astute, smart folks that care about this town, some of them have lived here a long time, some of them haven't lived here as long, but they're just as valuable to us, I know the mayor knows that probably better than anybody. From Randy Getman on the election board all the way down to the grievance board, everything in between, the town is really well-served by its residents. And last but not least, everybody, enjoy the rest of your summer and rock those masks.
You got it, sir, that's a good one. Okay, Keith, that's a good one.
Definitely, definitely, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody who's on the line for attending the meeting and stay safe and keep wearing your masks.
Very well. And Derek?
Thank you, I don't know if Wayne got back on, so I'll ask Holly, you know, I was going to mention in his report, there wasn't an update on the 261 sidewalk, so it asks, I know he's got a lot on his plate, but I'll just ask if he could follow up and provide an update on what the plan is and, you know, or what the steps, you know, the near-term steps for that project, if we could. So yeah, as Greg said, you know, we don't have a meeting in August unless, I guess, unless something unforeseen occurs, but I'm confident, I'm an optimist, so I don't think that's going to happen and I'm actually looking forward to seeing everyone in person, hopefully in September. Before I sign off, I just want to give a quick acknowledgement to our North Beach colleague, Mickey Hummel, who I see his name on there, I know he might have snuck in under Pat's eyes there, so thanks, Mickey, for joining us and everyone, enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you, council. As you know, we are going to go into closed session, for anybody else who's not on council except for, you know, Holly, Sharon and the attorney, this is it, our meeting's over, you can, you can sign off and thank you for the council and everybody else, we have a separate line to dial into, so I'll see y'all in about, hold on a second, I need a motion first.
Yeah, motion, motion and close and adjourn the regular meeting to go into closed session under the statutory authority of the Maryland Annotated Code, Persuasive to General Provisions, Article 3-305B, Subsection 7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice in regards to a contract.
I second that, assuming all the subsections were correct.
Right, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it, we'll see y'all in a couple minutes. Thank you, everybody.